Good Friday afternoon, guys. My name is Jerry Miller and welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. We're live in Charlottesville, the Commonwealth of the country and the world on the I Love Seaville Network. We're presented by Ting Fiber Internet, crazy fast internet, the best in central Virginia, and we got it at the best price possible only through iloveceville.ting.com. Iloveceville.ting.com. Today's a big day for Charlottesville. We now know who the new chief executive officer, the CEO, the city manager of the city is going to be, and that's a gentleman by the name of Chip Boiles. We will catch up with Michael Payne, Charlottesville City Councilor, on today's program about the hire. We'll talk about how we got to this point. We will also hear from Keith Smith. Keith Smith, great friend of this network, knows Chip Boiles intimately, has worked alongside him for a number of years. So a lot we're going to cover on the show. Michael, ooh, Michael is reaching out now. Michael, if you're watching, I'm going to Skype you as we speak. Judo, why don't we get Michael from the top? I'm curious of his thoughts. Michael, I'm going to Skype you now. I love what's going to happen. Folks, tell somebody, let folks know what's going on, and we'll have some fun. All right, you know what, Judo, why don't we do this via phone call? Michael, if you're watching, I'm trying to Skype you. If I don't get you on this one, I'm going to get you in via phone call here in a matter of moments. It's ringing. Chip Boiles is a guy that I think is going to absolutely right this ship. Jay Dobbs, I'm calling him instead as we get the city councilor on the line to talk about what I think is going to be something that's very important for the city. And righting the ship, stabilizing the organization is the phrase. Hey, what's up, Michael? Jerry Miller, how are you?
Doing good, you?
Good, I'm doing well. Hey, we got you on the show via conference call, so you're on the show. I wanted to give you a heads up here. I'm so grateful, Michael Payne, that you've come on this program. Thank you kindly. I will give you a heads up that you have a number of media outlets watching you now. Why don't we start open-ended? And first, let me give Michael Payne some props. If you have not had a chance to go to Michael Payne's Facebook page and read the very eloquent, his perspective on where we are in City Hall and City Manager, I very much encourage you to do so. It was also published in Charlottesville tomorrow. He's a fantastic writer, and I really appreciated the vulnerability he showed by saying, "Look, we need to do better. We're going to right this ship." And we're going to start with Chip Boiles. Open-ended, Michael, Chip Boiles, what are your thoughts, buddy?
Yeah, well, I think the entire community is just fortunate that Chip was willing to step up and take on the enormous task of trying to begin to solve the issues in City Hall and take some of those first steps to fill the vacancies, right the ship, and bring stability. Obviously, City Hall found itself in a crisis after John Blair let us know that he was going to be leaving the organization to go to Stanton, and that created a huge amount of just uncertainty about what's going to happen and the next steps for the organization, and really created just an immediate urgency for needing to fill the city manager's position. And so, we're just incredibly fortunate that we were able to make contact with Chip, and he was willing to talk with us and accept the position. I think he's got a tremendous amount of experience, obviously with the Planning District Commission as a previous city manager and other localities, a commitment to the city and the community, and a skill set around planning and housing issues. So, I think we're just incredibly fortunate that despite the urgency of the crisis, we didn't find ourselves in a position where we were having to just say, "Oh, we're just going to go with anyone." We were able to find a really strong, dedicated candidate for city manager.
Well, I agree. We'll hear from Jesse Rutherford about this. We'll hear from Keith Smith on today's show about this. Michael, give us some perspective, the five of you guys, city councilors, what the last week has been like with these emergency sessions?
Well, it's certainly been incredibly stressful and worrying. I mean, the city for a number of months, as I've said, has been in a leadership crisis just because of the amount of turnover, the number of city staff members who have announced their resignations and are leaving the organization, which has put, almost my entire time on council, that uncertainty with city staff and the number of people who are leaving and the infighting among council and its relationship with city staff has made proactive public policy almost impossible, and is really, it just makes it hard to focus on what you ran on and what your priorities are, and it makes it hard to take the concerns and requests from the community and turn it into public policy. Because when you don't have stable staff in place, there's no process for communicating with the city manager's office and them being able to turn your idea or your concerns either into policy or even to give you feedback about, "Okay, if you want to do this, if council wants to do this, this is going to be the process and timeline, X, Y, and Z." We just haven't been in a place where that's possible for a number of months. So, not only that, so that's been the case, and then the meetings over the past week just accelerated that so much more because John Blair announcing he's leaving put the city in a situation where you could very well have no one in the city manager's office in a month's time. You could have multiple department heads gone, vacancies in the city attorney's office and multiple other areas of the city. And if that's the situation, you're not just talking about we're no longer able to do proactive public policy, you're talking about the basic stability and continuity of government is in question. So it was definitely, I think, a wake-up call for council and gave us a tremendous amount of urgency that, "We've got to get this sorted out." And the first step is putting someone in that position of city manager, but there's a lot more work to do because if we're in this position, a lot has gone wrong.
Michael Payne, our guest, Charlottesville City Councilor. Michael, you've got folks at both TV stations and The Daily Progress watching you now on the program. How do we, you're new to the job. I mean, you just got elected in November this past year, you're new to the job here. Question for you, how do you think we got to this point with the attrition in City Hall?
Yeah, I mean, like I'd said before, I think council as a whole has to take accountability, and it starts at the top there. The instability in infighting among council has created uncertainty throughout the organization. And it's something that's taken time, but it's snowballed where you had some staff departures. You began to see issues related to city staff become discussed publicly. That instability led to more staff members leaving the organization, and it just reached a point where it just kept snowballing, where the people leaving made more people want to leave, or the people, because of the vacancies, staff members are overworked and working longer hours and filling multiple jobs, which leads to more people leaving. And city council to this point hasn't, it just hasn't been able to show clear leadership and set out a course for the city and commit to it and commit to doing what's necessary to try to change the culture within the organization where it's not one of such fear and uncertainty. And so, I think, again, I think a big part of it is the number of staff departures, the uncertainty in the city manager's office about who is going to be city manager, what's the direction of the city, and council not laying out a clear path forward of what they're going to do. And quite frankly, I think a lot of it is the level of instability that there's been has been out in the public and much more than is usual in the locality. A lot of staff decisions and specific staff members for a number of months have been discussed, and in many cases, quite personally, in public, on social media and at council meetings. And it just creates a toxic environment where I think a lot of people say, "I can't do this anymore," and it leads to a lot of people leaving. It makes it hard to recruit candidates as well.
Michael Payne, our guest, Charlottesville City Councilor. He's kind enough to join us here on the I Love Seaville Show. A lot of folks watching here. Tanisha wants me to ask you about Dr. Richardson. Tanisha, I will ask that question in a matter of moments. Couple other questions I want to ask Michael first. Give us the flip book. You hear John Blair, the interim city manager, is leaving for Stanton, the national search firm pulls out, and it sounds like at that point you guys are kind of in a pickle, right? Because you've got to fill the spot ASAP. Just give us the flip book of what happened, and we're all very curious, Michael.
Yeah, so, obviously, John Blair had been in the position of interim city manager, and a couple, I forget the exact date, but not too long ago, Mr. Blair informed us that he had accepted a position with the city of Stanton and would be leaving the organization.
Did that surprise you? Did that catch you off guard?
Absolutely. We knew that John Blair was under a lot of stress and that he was in extremely difficult position, as it would be a difficult position for anyone in city manager in this climate. And we also recognized that a city attorney was certainly not in his anticipated career path to ever stepped in as a city manager. So, we knew it was an extremely difficult position, but it definitely caught us off-guard about when he announced he was leaving, which I don't mean in any way as a criticism of him at all.
Oh, absolutely not.
I think he was just in an impossible situation. But definitely, we weren't anticipating it. Our expectation, our hope had been that we could begin work with the consultant to do a national search for a city manager. That could occur in six months or so and bring someone in. In the meantime, the interim could maintain the organization a little bit. But obviously, both the consulting firm backing out and telling us that, "I don't believe we can do a successful job in recruiting a city manager candidate," and John Blair also leaving threw that hope completely out the window and made it incredibly urgent that we have to find a solution here. We have to find an immediate solution to try to ensure that there's even just basic continuity of government and we're able to handle basic operations and deliver a budget, and that that is an immediate emergency need. And two, we're going to need to make a lot of significant, longer-term changes to directly address and confront all the dynamics that got us to this point. Because clearly, this is not a normal or good situation for a locality, and when you get here, you've just got to honestly confront what is everything that brought us here. But it definitely created a ton of urgency and was an emergency situation, which was very difficult. And also difficult because the advice the consultant gave us is, "Look, the amount of instability and the amount of public attacks that staff receives and the amount of infighting that there is, you're not going to be able to attract a city manager candidate." And most likely, the only kind of candidate you're going to get is either someone who's retired or near retirement and comes in because they're getting a big paycheck, or someone in the community who's dedicated and cares about the community and wants to do it because they want to serve, which made it a lot difficult because, one, we're on an expedited timeline for needing to solve that emergency need, and, two, it's such a difficult situation, who's going to step up and want to do it? And very fortunately, I think despite all the uncertainty in the crisis, we were able to not just find someone to do it, but find the right person and someone incredibly capable and dedicated to the community in Chip. And as difficult as it is, I think that's the bright spot, that he was willing to step up, and we ended up in a position where we didn't just find anyone, we found a really great person.
Well said, well said. A lot of questions coming in for you, Michael. I'm vetting the questions myself, so they're respectful and fair. I very much encourage anybody that's watching or listening, and we're live across every social media platform possible. The content lives in perpetuity online. I encourage you to go to Charlottesville tomorrow. I'm putting the link in the feed and read Michael Payne's commentary on where we are with City Hall. I thought you guys did a hell of a job with the Chip hire. How about the question of institutional memory, knowing the players in the game? He's got a feel for Charlottesville. He's working with various municipalities right now. This seems like just a rock star type of hire. How about having a feel for Charlottesville and understanding the dynamics of City Hall and how that could be advantageous for Chip as he tries to steer the ship in the right direction?
Yeah, I think one of the assets that Chip definitely brings is that while he hasn't worked within city government and in City Hall, he's been in the community for a number of years, working with the Planning District Commission, going to council meetings, going to work sessions and committee meetings, also working with Albemarle and other surrounding And so, has just a ton of connections in the community, is aware of city governments and how they operate. Is executive director of TJPDC, has just a ton of experience in the community, and I think that's very valuable because it allows him to come in and hit the ground running. There's not nearly as much of an onboarding period or figuring out what the community is, what the situation is, what the priorities are of the community. He's in it and aware of it. And likewise, even though he's coming from outside the organization, I think that's an opportunity because I think it allows him to come in with a fresh eye and figure out, are there changes that can be made within how council operates, how council operates between staff and itself, what council's priorities are, what kind of processes you need in order to turn some of our ideas into policies? And he'll be able to come in with that fresh lens while also having that connection to the community that will allow him to hit the ground running. And as a previous city manager in other localities, obviously coming in with just that professional experience of what management needs to look like and how it operates.
You're getting props, Michael Payne, from a lot of people. One of the people giving you props right now is Neil Williamson, who's watching from the Free Enterprise Forum. He shared a story that he published on his website that I'm reading now. I've posted that story in the comments section on Facebook for you guys to read. He's got a screenshot of your Facebook post where you offered perspective. Michael, that was extremely well-received, and I was, this is what I respected and appreciated of what you did. You were honest, you were real, you admitted what was going wrong and we needed to fix it, and you were genuine. What prompted you to write that opinion piece and then syndicated or scale it to Facebook as well?
Yeah, the situation, the entire time I've been on council, it's just been extremely difficult because of the staff turnover, the infighting, also in the context of a global pandemic, an economic crisis, the social unrest and demands for change and injustice throughout the country, and in the national political climate. And the past week just accelerated all of that locally in terms of how much is going wrong and how much needs to change. And it made it clear that whatever the dynamics are that led us here, we're on, our city government is on, was on, the brink of some kind of collapse. And I don't care if you're apolitical, conservative, liberal, progressive, socialist, whatever, if you have a city government that collapses and can't do basic governance, none of it matters. That's the foundation. No matter what you want to see happen or you care about, if that's not in place, it's not going to happen, and it will impact the community because you won't have a city government that can respond to citizens and maintain a high-quality, functional level of day-to-day services. So, when you have a local government reach that point, fundamental things have to change, and we have to own up to, "This has gone terribly wrong." And it's way beyond the point of trying to place blame or put it on individuals or specific decisions. It's bigger than that. There are just fundamental things that have to change. And so, that's what spurred me to write it, and I think it's just vital that we acknowledge that while people, I think, are obviously paying a lot of attention nationally and may not follow day-to-day stuff locally, people are kind of vaguely aware of it, and they may not, they know there's turmoil and things going on, but they may not know the extent to how bad it is. And I think it's vital that council be honest and confront that and honestly try to say what we need to do to change going forward. And I think it's important for us as councilors to be, just to be genuine and honest. We're human, and we're a part of the community like anyone else. And it's been an extraordinarily difficult time for us, and we just have to change the dynamics, not just among council, but among the community, where if we're just at each other's throats all the time, personally insulting each other, saying that we have the worst of intentions, it's just going to create a toxic environment and prevent us from doing the things we actually care about. And so, I hope it can at least be a small part of allowing some of the community members who have been angry at us and attacking us personally to just see and recognize that we're human, and it's an extremely difficult situation, and you don't have to like us, you don't have to agree with everything we do, or most of what we do even. But I will say, I think everyone on council and the staff that I have worked with throughout the organization and in my time on council, in the past and now, are sincerely dedicated to the community, and there's differences and disagreements, but they truly care about this community. They're not just doing it as a stepping stone to run for higher office or a resume builder. They've made enormous sacrifices for this community, and that's true for every single councilor. And I think it's just important that we engage in that conversation as well because, again, if we're at council meetings from the public and amongst ourselves, if we're just at each other's throats and hating each other, that's going to permeate throughout, not just City Hall, but the entire community. And again, it'll just make it impossible to take action on the things that actually matter.
Two more questions for you, Michael. We appreciate your honesty here. I really sincerely appreciate what you're doing right now. Tanisha's watching. We know Tanisha's been waving the Dr. Richardson flag. I'll give you an open-ended question, anywhere you want to go on this topic. Was it ever an option, him coming back, and anything you want to offer on what happened with Dr. Richardson?
Sure. Well, I don't want to talk too much about personnel stuff, but I'll say this, I sincerely thank Dr. Richardson for his service to the community. I genuinely think that he served the community in an extraordinarily difficult time, in an extraordinarily difficult environment. He made a number of changes within city government that were positive. I think he served the community admirably, and I would thank him for that. Obviously, he's here for around 16 months, and even within that time, I think there were positive things that were able to happen. And there's obviously a lot of community members who had good relationships with him and supported his tenure as city manager, and wanted Dr. Richardson to come back. That's certainly something that council seriously discussed and acknowledged his skill set that he had and could bring to the city. But council ended up choosing Chip, and there's a lot that goes into that. I don't want to talk about every discussion and personnel matter, but the situation we ended in is council moving forward with Chip, and I would just sincerely thank Dr. Richardson for his service. I would acknowledge absolutely, there's many people in the community who wanted a different direction for the city, but we are moving forward with Mr. Boiles, and that's the direction we're committed to and have to be committed to. He has the full backing of every councilor, and that's the direction. And all we can do is look forward and think about the opportunities going forward, about what we can change and build and achieve. And I think, I'm just trying to be in a mindset of, there's these enormous challenges, but every single challenge is also an enormous opportunity, and we just have to look forward. And I am hopeful that Chip will be able to work with us as a team to do that.
All right, last question. Kevin Higgins has given you props on what you wrote. Last question for you, Michael, anywhere you want to go. The citizens of Charlottesville, 2021, what do we expect from council and for this new city manager?
Yeah, like I said yesterday, if I'm just being honest, and I'm not trying to gain things or have a political angle, if I'm just being honest with the people, the only thing that will really matter over this next year for council is working directly with Chip to try to rebuild the leadership team, fill the vacancies, bring stability, and get back to a local city government that's firing on all cylinders. That's the only thing that we can do that will really matter because we need to talk about policy, we need to talk about issues and make our priorities known, but until that piece of stability is solved, none of that will be able to become policy or move forward. Well, I shouldn't say none. There's a lot that has been happening and will happen, but a lot of proactive public policy and big new initiatives, it just won't be possible in this environment. And so, I think that is what our task over the next year is. And I think it will look like council working directly with Chip and the city manager's office in order to set norms, expectations, and procedures for how council expresses its policy priorities, conducts meetings, communicates among itself, communicates with the city manager's office and city staff, working on things like the strategic plan to give clear direction about our policy priorities to the city manager's office, and finishing that piece up and solidifying it. I think it will look like Chip filling these vacancies and putting in place neighborhood development services and the city manager's office and HR and other areas of the city, putting in place mission-driven team members who want to step into those roles because they have a vision for what they can change, what they can make better, and how they can serve the community. I think it will look like... the community. Um, you know, I think it will look like, you know, us working with Chip diving into this, this upcoming budget and figuring, um, you know, figuring that out and delivering, you know, a high-quality, solid budget. I think it will look like council owning up to the things that have gone wrong and owning up to what needs to change and having a lot of honest conversations with the community amongst itself and with city staff. Um, and, you know, that, that, that's, all that's the critical things. Just getting back to the basics of how you build a strong leadership team and a strong local government. And having that guided by, um, the mission and vision of the issues Charlottesville cares about in, 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 in what we can become as a city and becoming more just and equitable. Um, and, and once we're there, you know, there, that's an enormous task. And once that's done, there's still other enormous tasks when it comes to the economic recovery from the pandemic, which is, um, you know, you know, better than most people, has really devastated our local economy and our local businesses. Um, you know, handling that, handling, you know, the policy issues, um, you know, getting, finally getting, you know, a strong police civilian review board off the ground, um, and firing on all cylinders, um, affordable housing and the comprehensive plan and the zoning rewrite, um, and a ton of other stuff, you know. Those are enormous challenges on their own, even if you aren't needing to rebuild a leadership team and try to right a ship.
Michael, thank you. You were great today, per usual. Appreciate the time. I really, and I, maybe we speak for the listeners here, I really appreciate your honesty today. Um, you were just, uh, you were Michael Payne, the Charlottesvilleian today, uh, and not necessarily Michael Payne, the Charlottesville City Councilor. And I think people need that now because we're feeling uncertain, vulnerable. We got this pandemic. We got the economy. There's some turnover in city hall. I just really respect what you did today and what you wrote for Charlottesville tomorrow. Thank you so much, Michael Payne.
Thank you. And, and, you know, I'll just finally say, I think, you know, I, I, we've discussed a lot of the challenges today, but I think it's really important to also think about those opportunities. And there's been a lot of uncertainty. There's still uncertainty. But I truly believe that Chip is the right person for this job. And I think Charlottesville has a really bright future ahead and that a lot of positive things are going to happen. And it's been rough, you know, it's been uncertainty. Um, there's still going to be more of that. But for the first time in a while, you know, I'm feeling a lot more, um, confident and hopeful that we really will get there. And I truly believe we are. And, and that's the bright spot.
Um, well, I, I hope, I hope, uh, that does come to fruition. And we will also emphasize the positive moving forward. Thank you for the time, Michael Payne.
Thank you.
You have a good one. Michael Payne, Charlottesville City Councilor. Comments coming in left and right. Bashir is watching. Bashir, where are you these days? Um, Bashir says, I hope they will leave Dr., um, Chip alone to do her, to do his job. Um, and, and that basically comes back to it. The, the perception, the perspective is that council did not allow Dr. Richardson to do his job. Um, we're going to hear from Keith Smith and Jesse Rutherford of Chip Boils, the new council, the new city manager today on the program. In fact, do you have the sound ready to go from Keith, Judah? Let's get Keith's sound up and then Jesse after that. Um, and then I'm going to ask this question. Where does Charlottesville go from here? It was very clear in the interview with Michael that one of the important aspects of where we go from here is stopping the bickering and the fighting on the dais within council. You know, that's something he emphasized many times here. Um, Michael Payne, Heather Hill, and Lloyd Snook each published on their social media platforms, three city counselors, um, positive perspective and commentary on the Chip Boils hire. Payne's was the best by far. At the same time that Payne, Hill and Snook were publishing on social media positive perspective of the new city manager riding the ship and stabilizing the organization, the mayor of Charlottesville was offering her perspective on the social media at the exact same time the other counselors were talking positively of Chip and the new hire. The mayor of Charlottesville on her social media had some things that absolutely took me aback in commentary on white folks in Charlottesville and how white folks in Charlottesville, in lack of better phrase, are ruining the city. We'll show you in a matter of moments what Mayor Walker wrote while the other three counselors are talking about Chip Boils and moving forward and stabilizing the organization and, 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 and going in the right path. The mayor is talking topics that are dividing the community. I'll give you that quote in a matter of perspective. First, let's hear from Keith Smith on Chip Boils. J-Dubs, you got that? Sound ready to go? All right, I'll count you in. Keith Smith's worked alongside Chip Boils for a long time. Here's what he had to say on Real Talk this morning, um, on the I Love Seaville Network. Judah, three, two, and one.
Tell us why you think Chip Boils is an excellent city manager for Charlottesville, Virginia at a time of turmoil right now.
Yeah. So, I, like I said, I'm uniquely qualified to do this. I'm the second long, actually, either, either the longest or the second longest, uh, member, commissioner of the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, um, in my 10th year and just got reappointed for three more years. Um, but I, I was part of, I chaired actually the, the selection process to hire Chip. And over the last, probably much, much to his, um, disliking, and we tease each other very much. So I consider Chip a very close friend. Um, but he spent, I probably spent between 10 to 20 hours a month with him for the last at least four years as part of the chairman of the Regional Housing Partnership. And, and I'm the, been the treasurer for the last three years over the, over at the commission. And I want to just put it in a little bit historical perspective, right? And not getting too much into the details. And this is why I know this is the right hire. Um, I was actually texting with Heather Hill early this morning about this. Um, when Chip took over the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, it was actually in a darker place than the city is right now.
Wow, that says a lot.
So we had some serious, let's call staff issues with the executive director. I can't go into the particular details, but it was unpleasant. Um, we were having issues with, um, money. We were awfully close to having to shut our doors, like, like 30 days close to shutting, shutting our doors. Almost all of our key employees left. We had zero of program managers is what they're called.
So this is like city hall. Maybe worse.
And it's worse than that. Um, and so the whole purpose of the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission is we work with the regional governments. The regional governments wouldn't talk to us.
So that's the whole premise of the concept and they wouldn't do it with you.
I'm telling you, it was in a bad place. Um, and to a certain extent, in my opinion, you know, as far as apples, apples, volume is different, number of people, you know, those things are different. But in a high level, it was exactly the same. And I chaired the search committee to hire, hire Chip. He came from Baton Rouge, I believe it was Baton Rouge. Um, and we interviewed a ton of folks to go get through this thing. And what we did is we reorganized, which is what the city's going to do, I'm sure, because it has to. We reorganized our structure, gave Chip the tools and the support of the commissioners, everyone, every single. So they got five that they have to deal with?
City counselors.
We got 12.
12 on the commission.
Which are all elected officials except for one or two of us. And we needed to rally up around Chip, support him 110%. And now the city stole him from us. Now, now, uh, you know, we're, 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 we're could not have been likely as opposite of that. We're super respected on every one of the jurisdictions. We have jurisdictions coming to us and saying, solve this problem for us. That's what we're built to do, right? We're financially, um, not to give too many details, it was public record, actually. Financially, we have, we have many, many, many months of, uh, uh, undesignated operating cash on it. We've, uh, we've got great staff. Everybody's super happy to work there. And what I'm trying to get to, Michael, Lloyd, Heather.
Sina.
Sina.
Mayor Walker.
Mayor Walker. If they just support him and let him do his job, we will have a conversation a year from now and everything will be different. Maybe not 180, right? Maybe 90 degrees where we're, not 180, 180, yeah, 180, maybe 90 degrees, duh.
360 is the one we're taking smack here.
It's only coffee, guys. Um, it will maybe be 90 degrees where we are today.
But better.
To me, that's a thousand percent.
So you love the hire. You love Chip Boils as the hire.
It's freaking awesome. I, I, we had a, a, a meeting on this yesterday and, and Jesse, who's going to get called in, was part of that. Um, and my words were, this is a win-win for everybody.
Tell us why.
That's Keith Smith right there on Real Talk this morning on Chip Boils. The man knows him firsthand, worked alongside Chip Boils, Keith Smith has done. Uh, I respect the perspective of people who have been in the trenches, working with somebody and having to right the ship. And that's what Chip did. Now here's Jesse Rutherford, Nelson County Board of Supervisor, talking about Chip Boils and the positivity he can bring to Charlottesville, Virginia. Judah, do you have that sound ready to go? All right, let's get Jesse Rutherford, Nelson County Board of Supervisor in three, two, one.
Chip Boils, city manager, Charlottesville. Anywhere you want to go on this topic, Jesse Rutherford.
Absolutely. So Chip Boils is the best of the best. Um, you know, when we, when we talk about, you know, Charlottesville situation, I see Keith, um, I can't imagine having a better leader than Chip to be the one doing it. Um, he's a great diplomat, as I think Keith was trying to say earlier. He's a wonderful diplomat. I mean, he has to deal with the diversity of a region from Louisa Green, Madison, all the way down to Nelson County, and then throwing in the Charlottesville Almelo's perspective. So for us, you know, for me to have seen that, it is just a phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal, uh, diplomat. So, you know, I'm excited. I will say this message to, to council and whatnot, guys, you know, there's no reason Chip should ever be on the menu, you know? That guy never deserves whatever item that they might treat him because Chip is such a great guy. He's the best of the best. And, uh, I will say that in Nelson County, if they have issues with, with him, then Nelson County will put an embargo on the finest foods and beverages.
Chip Boils.
Jesse Rutherford, thank you. That's Jesse Rutherford from Real Talk this morning, 10:15 Tuesdays and Fridays on the I Love Seaville Network. So here we hear from Jesse Rutherford. Here we hear from Michael Payne. We hear from Keith Smith. Yesterday, we saw Michael Payne publish a commentary on his Facebook page in Charlottesville tomorrow that was genuine and real and authentic. He showcased his vulnerability, the pain he was feeling, the fact that this has been extremely difficult for five people who are making 18,000, four of them, 20,000 for the mayor. They ain't making much money and they're going through hell. They are going through hell here. Now Abby, who's watching the program, Tanisha, who's watching the program, you guys would probably say they deserve some of this hell. And, and, and to a certain point, you guys are exactly right. To a certain point, you're exactly right. But it was very evident to me in the interview we did with Michael Payne that it's time to move forward, stop the name-calling on social media. We saw a lot of name-calling between the mayor and counselor Lloyd Snook over the last two weeks on social media. Very inexplicably, yesterday, right before the press conference, our mayor on her Facebook page, which is her vehicle to getting her commentary out to the public. She does not really do interviews with the media. She does not do interviews with the media. How she gets her commentary and perspective out to the public is through her Facebook page in the written form or through Facebook Lives. That's a fact. And yesterday, right before the press conference, Judah, get the pool quote on screen. Get the pool quote on screen. For those that are watching on, for those that are listening and not watching, Apple Podcasts, iTunes, um, Spotify and Pandora, I'm going to read it to you. Facebook and Instagram, look at the screen now. Keep the pool quotes. This is from the mayor. I'm going to read it to you. Quote, the mayor of Charlottesville, quote, yesterday before the press conference to announce the new city manager hire, quote, "This denial is why the white power structure in Charlottesville is still contemplating whether or not to authent- authenticate changes necess-" Excuse me, let me start over. "This denial is why the white power structure in Charlottesville is still contemplating whether or not authentic change is necessary. White people believe they were forced into considering change after the summer of hate. This denial is the reason why I've mostly sat in the background over the past year to watch how devious you all might be towards me when you thought I was weak. This denial has led some of the leadership in the city to orchestrate the demise of our local government while pointing the finger at me for ruining, for running our beautiful ugly city into the ground." Stop denying it. This is exactly who you are. Keep the pool quote on screen, Judah. Look at the screen, Facebook. Look at the screen, Facebook. Literally before the press conference, I just, I don't get the behavior. I don't get the behavior. I don't get the behavior. Right before you make a hire for the city manager, you post on social media about white folks? And how devious they are? And this denial has led some of the leadership in the city to orchestrate the demise of our local government while pointing the finger at me for running, for running our beautiful ugly city into the ground? Stop denying it. This is exactly who you are? I've said this so many times on this program. The role of mayor is to galvanize. It's to unify. It's to bring us together and move us forward. It, it, it's not to call other people on social, bold-faced liars that sit next to you on the dais. Activism is a necessary component of our community. We do a lot of activism on this set because we have a massive following of people. More than NBC 29, the Daily Progress or Seaville Weekly, the numbers don't lie. We reach more than any media outlet in town. It's not even close. It's because we're putting this content on every social media platform possible while the traditional news is still trying to sell you information on a box in front of your sofa or in a print product that gets dropped off of your driveway that's paper thin or on a speaker in your car. That's not how we absorb information anymore. It's how we're doing it. There's a place in every community for activism and it's a must. But there's a clear distinction between activism and being the mayor. If you want to be an activist, you probably shouldn't be the mayor of a town or a city. The mayor does different things than an activist. A couple of hours before a press conference, going after every white person in Charlottesville is not good optics, is not good leadership, and it's piss-poor timing. Why at, at, at the most crucial decision council has made in some time, do you do this ambiguous post about hating white people a few hours before the press conference to make the hire? It's just like the worst kind of politician possible. It's not understanding the community, the climate, timing, and it's not understanding how to rally and pull people together. You disagree with me, let me know. Put it in the feed and I'll relay it on air. But enough is enough. Enough is enough. We just had the counselor on saying, we have to stop the bickering and the internal fighting. Yet a couple of hours before the presser, you lambaste white people across the community. I just don't get it. Kelly Jackson, I'm going to reach out to you in a matter of moments here. Kelly Jackson's going to join us on this program. Items I still want to cover on the show before we get to your comments. Almorel County schools are virtual again, but the kids can play sports. So that's an interesting dynamic. Almorel County, all your students have to learn at home because of COVID, but you can play winter sports though. We'll talk about that on today's program. Um, New York City apartment rentals are, are, are spiking. They're spiking. We've got a new restaurant in Richmond that's opening up and we'll talk UVA basketball. Kelly Jackson, we're going to you in a matter of moments. Scott Bandy, it's already at large general knowledge Juan Diego Wade is in the race for the 2021 for Democrats. I, we had Juan Diego Wade on the show on Monday, Scott. Juan Diego Wade is running for Charlottesville City Council. He's the first to make, well, Mayor Walker's running. I would expect she's going to run as an independent again. That's how she ran the first time. Juan Diego Wade is running as a Democrat. The Democratic primary is June 3rd here. The, the, what is it? The top two vote-getters for the Democratic primary on June 3rd will advance to the general election where the two Dems, along with Mayor Walker, I can't imagine another independent is going to get in the mix. Bellamy Brown learned the last election cycle that running as an independent is extremely difficult. So you'll have two Dems- So you'll have two Dems come out of the Democratic primary on the 3rd. And on the 4th, when we do this show, we'll know those two Democrats and then the independent Nakia Walker, three people going for two spots on November 3rd. I expect Juan Diego Wade to advance from the, the June 3rd Democratic primary. And I'm going to straight up say it right now, straight up saying it right now. The I Love Seaville Network will put its entire influence and weight behind Juan Diego Wade. Okay? Entire influence and weight behind Juan Diego Wade. School Board, Community Pillar, Stewart of Charlottesville. He's a, he's a guy that I think would work really well here. Jude, I'm reaching out to Kelly Jackson right now. We got her on the line. KJ, can you see me? How are you? How are you?
I'm living the mom life.
You're living the mom life. I see that. I see the mom life around you there. All right, so throw this to you, KJ.
I'm a mess.
That's everybody's house right now because we're all staying home longer than we're supposed to. All right, KJ, what do you think about all this mess? You're a businesswoman. You know how to play many different games. You wear many different hats. What do you think of this mess? Open-ended question.
I think that if the council and the mayor don't give the resources to the new city manager, nothing is going to change. End of story. If you don't give someone the tools to do their job, they're going to fail regardless of how good they are. And if we can't get along internally and give people the authority to make decisions for themselves and for them to make their job decisions, then we're just going to be here again, you know, in the next sixteen, eighteen months.
Are you, you're a businesswoman? Is it sixteen Panera breads?
Yeah.
Okay, you're a businesswoman here. A lot of those in Charlottesville and in central Virginia. As Charlottesville goes, central Virginia goes. How does the businesswoman Kelly Jackson feel about all this stuff that's happening? I mean, it ain't good for business.
I mean, it's not good for business, but also I have a strong brand. You know, Panera is a strong brand and we, we have done okay through COVID. I think we're going to, you know, we'll change some of the things that restaurants world will chain them. Smaller footprint, drive-throughs, things like that. What I'm more for, for the city of Charlottesville is the downtown mall. I want the downtown mall to be full of restaurants, full of people. That traffic drives my business. So if downtown isn't a focus about rebuilding and getting other businesses in there, everyone in Charlottesville, Alamo County, vineyards, breweries, everybody is going to suffer. So I think, you know, when Michael was great, I thought he was very positive and I thought it was a great interview. When he said like, well, the agenda first, we have to, you know, fill all these spots. Well, I hope the new city manager has an agenda that everyone saw it before electing him or selecting him to come in. And I hope that they share that sooner rather than later. And if it doesn't include growing business in the downtown mall, that's going to be a problem.
That is a damn good take right there. Cut that into a sizzle reel for Monday's show. That is a damn good take. You said your business goes as downtown goes? Tell me about that.
No, I mean downtown, people visit Charlottesville for many reasons, right? They are coming for a wedding. They're coming to see the vineyards, do the brewery tours. And they love the downtown mall. I mean, that's what makes our town so special and unique. So I think if there's no downtown mall, then people aren't probably just going to do day trips to the vineyards. And if they are, they're not staying in hotels. They're not grabbing breakfast at my Panera or grabbing lunch on the way to the vineyards. Or, you know, who's going to go downtown for Fridays after five and grab a pizza? And, you know, hang out with friends and then after it, go to the bars down there. Suffer. I think downtown mall is one of the major drives for people to visit and stay and hang out for the weekend in Charlottesville.
You're on point today. I'm going to ask you a question as a mom, as a businesswoman, and as someone who is very much empowered, which you are. You have two daughters, you have two daughters and you're raising them in a way to be empowered women who are strong, that speak their mind.
Correct.
And that's incredibly important without question.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm going to, I'm going to tie this to the mayor.
Okay.
Speak in your mind, being strong and empowered.
I feel like you're setting me up for something.
And then where we're at now, anywhere you want to go with what you've seen from the mayor?
I think negative attitudes are contagious, especially people in leadership. If you look at the glass half-empty, everyone around you is going to have the glass half-empty. They're going to be angry. They're not going to want to do their job. They're not going to want to be around other people that they have to work with. I think it creates a hostile work environment when you are a leader of a team and you have to work as a team. I think even if things aren't going well, but you stay positive and you give off a positive attitude and you encourage others, I think you get better results. It's like kids, right? Like for me, I don't scream at my kids because that just creates more screaming. You know, I do positive rewards with, with positive behavior. And that creates more positive behavior. And I think as a mayor or anybody, any elected official, you have to look at both sides of the aisle. And it's not how you feel personally that you can communicate. It's how you feel for your job in the city or the business you're working in. Your personal opinions shouldn't come into play in your professional life.
Well said. You're on point here. How many people under your tutelage, how many employees in your team total across all of them?
Oh geez, I don't know.
Like roundabout, back of the napkin?
Let's say six hundred plus.
Okay, so you have a freaking, a hell of a lot of people that count on you. Like a hell of a lot of people that count on you. That is more than are counting on the mayor. That's, I think that is more than employees in the city. Woman to woman, would you offer her any advice? People look up to you, woman to woman.
I mean, I would say, listen, you have a job to do. You were elected. You've made mistakes in the past. That doesn't mean you can't change the narrative now. It's a new clean slate. You can make different choices and you can choose to promote positivity. And if you want to, you can be the crucial person to help rebuild downtown. And Charlottesville is a city, but you got to make that choice. And it's never too late to change your mind and your actions.
Dude, you came with your A-game today, didn't you? Because I threw some hard-ass questions to you and you handled them well. I didn't just throw to you, is Panera changing its footprint with more drivins now because of COVID? I threw some real freaking stuff to you and you handled it well. Mom of two, wife of one, how do you feel about Charlottesville, Kelly Jackson? And its future? How do you feel about its future?
I'm nervous. I'm nervous for its future, not for my business. But I'm also positive. Charlottesville's always come together when it's needed to the most. I am confident that if our community gets the vaccine, that restaurants and other businesses get their PPE loans. I think people, I'm hopeful that people will be out in droves this summer, probably even more than ever because everyone's been stuck inside. I think the breweries are going to do great. I think restaurants are going to rebuild. I think we're going to see some new cool concepts, you know, in restaurants and in business that could be interesting. Like that Ghost Kitchen, I think that's going to be really cool and interesting. So I'm hopeful. People love Charlottesville. No one's just going to pack up their bags and say like, screw Charlottesville, I'm out. I think people are going to work harder to rebuild it because they love it that much.
Charlottesville, I agree with you. I certainly hope that's the case. You touched on the vaccines. For some inexplicable reason, we have a logjam of getting these into people's arms. It is like the most irritating, frustrating aspect of this year. We have Pfizer and Moderna and all these companies busting their ass to create this thing. They did, they, they, it's, it's like literally a wonder of modern medicine that they were able to get a vaccine this fast. And now we can't get them in people's arms, Kelly.
Okay, I don't understand that because I can go into Wegmans or CVS and be like, hey, I'm here for a flu shot. And they give it to me. We don't have enough people? Do we not have enough vaccine? Like, I don't know. Where's the call to arms? Like if they need volunteers to take people's names or register people, then tell the community that I'm happy to volunteer and take people's temperatures or name, whatever it is. And I don't think it's a money factor. I don't think, try to be like, well, what happens if I donate a gazillion dollars, can get the vaccine up and remove it? And the answer is no. So it's not a money issue. I guess it's a, I don't know what the issue is. Do you?
No, I, I just, I, I, I'm so flabbergasted. Like all these companies busted their tail to get this vaccine done and it's, it's efficiency, it's efficacy is over ninety percent. And we have this pandemic, this COVID thing that we've never prepared for, and we have a solution on the sidelines and it won't get in the game. I mean, it's like so freaking pissing me off here. I, I just don't get it. KJ, we still got you there? Okay, all right, you're, okay, you're going in and out a little bit. All right, throw final question to you. Message, message to the community. We're in January, we're, we're, we're getting over the super-spreader events that were Christmas and New Year's. We're still not over them yet. Dude, these cases are going freaking bananas.
Yeah. Hey, I know everyone has COVID fatigue. But please stay home when you don't have to be out and about. Order from your local restaurants, do curbside, do delivery, wear your mask. And when you get the chance to get the vaccine, please get it. That's it.
Right. Please get the vaccine. Do not say no to the vaccine. Please get the vaccine. KJ, what's, uh, what's the plan for Monday?
We have Jamie, my co-host, fourth grade teacher on.
No way. Is that true? That's awesome.
Yeah, it's going to be hysterical.
I can't, I wonder what fourth grade Jamie was like?
A train wreck.
Fourth grade Jamie Schwartz. Her teacher's going to be on the show on Monday? That is awesome. That is awesome. She's Kelly Jackson. Yeah?
Yeah. Oh, I need to know your favorite beer. I lost that bet. What case am I bringing?
Thank you. My favorite beer is Minuteman, Dave Warwick and Three-Nodged. We had a bet on the Ohio State Alabama game. She's a diehard Buckeye. Didn't, your dad went to Ohio State, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, diehard Buckeye. All right, so Monday, we're drinking beers?
Drinking beers Monday.
Okay, I'm excited. I'm excited for all of it, KJ, and I'm going to leave it at that, okay? You have a good one, my friend. I'll see you on Monday.
Okay, bye.
All right, take care. All right, Kelly Jackson, guys. All right, jump in the mix. Thoughts, comments, concerns? Thoughts, comments, concerns? Put them in the mix. Oh, a lot of comments come in and I'll read your comments on air here in a matter of moments. Obviously, the, uh, the, uh, Mayor Walker commentary that I just offered is getting a lot of comments across Instagram, LinkedIn, Facebook, et cetera. Yesterday, I watched, and it's crazy, especially during COVID. During these COVID times, this iPhone and this computer and these social media channels we've been using have become even more critically important than ever. This iPhone, this computer and these social media channels are now how we get human connection during a pandemic. The pandemic has amplified social media, mobile and digital more than ever. And how we talk and communicate and connect with our friends, our families, our colleagues, our neighbors, politicians, business leaders is through this. It's through social now because we can't do it in person because we're scared we're going to get a disease that we don't know a lot about. So yesterday I watched as Heather, Counselor Heather Hill, Counselor Michael Payne, Counselor Lloyd Snook, each offered their own perspectives that had a positive twist about City Hall, about council, about these emergency sessions and how we got to Chip Boils. I haven't seen much with Cena. Cena isn't as active on social as the other ones. At the same time, where they're making this commitment to positivity, and as Michael said, the commitment to stopping the in-house fighting, at the same time, within hours, I see the perspective from the mayor. Put it back on screen for those that are watching on Facebook, the pool quote. Look at the screen, Facebook. I just don't understand it. I just don't understand it. I'll say it again. The election that happens on November 3rd in Charlottesville, Virginia, November 3rd of this year, is one of the most important elections in Charlottesville history. One of the most important elections in Charlottesville history. And a couple more items I want to get off my chest here. I'm choosing my words carefully. Let's take the president, Donald Trump. And I'm not going to talk Republican, I'm not going to talk Democrat. I'm not going to talk ideologies, policy or politics. I'm going to talk optics, legacy and history. Let's talk optics, legacy and history. Whether you hate Trump, whether you love Trump, whether you're indifferent to Trump. In the last two weeks and change, heck, since November 3rd, from November 3rd until today, since the election until today, the American people, history books for generations to come, will depict the Trump presidency by November 3rd, 2020 to January 15th, 2021. This window of November, December and January is going to be how the Trump tenure and the Trump presidency will be branded. It's going to be his legacy. The next generation will read about the riots at the Capitol. The next generation will read about YouTube, Facebook, Snapchat, TikTok and every social media platform, stripping Trump of his constitutional rights of freedom of speech. His legacy and brand will be tarnished by what has happened over November, December and January to the point that any good he did in office will be forgotten because of the most recent is what we remember. I'm going to make that comparison locally now. We have a mayor who's approaching the end of her term. And she's done a lot of really good stuff. She's the first African-American mayor in Charlottesville, Virginia history. That's significant. However, the last few months of her term as mayor are going to what determine her legacy and her brand as a politician. It's not fair, but that's what we do in 2020. What just happened becomes a broad stroke of the entire tenure. She's not careful. Her tenure, her term, her brand, her legacy will be remembered and depicted by the fighting on council, the bickering on social media, the calling of Lloyd Snook a bold-faced liar and the straight-up antagonization of every white person in Charlottesville and central Virginia. The similarities with what's happening in the White House and what's happening in the mayor's seat in the dais are significant. Both used social media for polarizing topics that divide the community. Neither has a good relationship with the media. All use social, digital and mobile to attack opponents that don't agree with their agenda. Both use bully tactics to try to ramrod their agenda and policy down the throat of colleagues, taxpayers and voters alike. Look at the similarities between the president and the mayor and how they go about their business. between the president and the mayor and how they go about their business. Eventually, what I've learned from, from leading, this is what I've learned. When you piss everybody off around you, they stop having your best interests at heart. When you piss everybody off around you, they inexplicably quit and resign. We have no deputy city managers. John Blair left Charlottesville for Stanton. And say what you want about Stanton. I love you Stanton. I love your downtown mall. I love you Stanton. I love going downtown, restaurant hopping. I love the people in Stanton. But I want you to compare apples to apples. The city attorney job at Charlottesville, Virginia versus the city attorney job at Stanton, Virginia. Do you think going from Charlottesville to Stanton is a vertical move? No, it's not. Taking the city attorney job in Stanton as opposed to keeping the city attorney job in Charlottesville is not a vertical move. It's going down the totem pole from a career ladder standpoint. Stanton is smaller. Stanton doesn't have the reputation of Charlottesville. You're going down the career ladder, taking this job. But the gentleman who I know and John Blair is first-class A-plus people, he did the scales of justice and on the scales of justice, it was this. A, do I take this job in Stanton that is clearly a downgrade from a career standpoint? Or B, do I stay in this role as interim city manager? Hope to God they get a city manager ASAP and then deal with all this bickering nonsense and infighting that is Charlottesville city government? The man clearly made the decision to downgrade a career from Charlottesville to Stanton because he got so tired of the bickering and the BS inside Charlottesville City Hall. Same thing's happening to Trump. People are sprinting from Trump as if he had COVID. He had COVID. People are sprinting from Trump as if he had the Spanish flu, leprosy, the flu or chicken pox. Look, look what's happening. The parallel between what's happening in the White House and in City Hall is undoubtedly an accurate comparison. I reached out to John Blair today. We'll see if we can get, um, Mr. Blair on the program sometime next week. Um, I think it's important that you hear from a guy that I think really did a hell of a job stepping up for this community in a time of need. If you're an attorney, do you want to be a city manager? Probably not. Right? But you know why you do it? Because you care about the town. You care about the town. The guy is leaving for Stanton despite the opportunity to collect, and I, I talked about this on the show, $7,500 contributions to his retirement account from Charlottesville City every three, four months that he's interim city manager. That's how much he sprinted away from the job. He's turning his back on like 15K or so in contributions over this year. And instead going down the career totem pole to Stanton because he wanted to get away from this. Questions, comments, concern, put them in the feed. Questions, comments, concern, put them in the feed. Virginia plays Clemson tomorrow, six o'clock at Clemson. It's an opportunity for Virginia, for, for the Hoos to get a marquee matchup in the ACC. They're four and O in conference play, UVA hoops, but the four teams they've played are all at the bottom of the ACC. Tomorrow at six at Clemson in Death Valley, they play a three and one Clemson basketball team in the Atlantic Coast Conference. We'll, we'll learn a lot about Virginia basketball tomorrow. Uh, I'm going to get to your comments now and I'm totally fine if you disagree with me. I do not mind if you disagree with me. Okay? That's, that's what makes this country great. I can agree to disagree with somebody and not take it personally. Um, all right. This is Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, I respect you. I'm glad you came on the program. You have an open invitation to come on this show anytime you want, Tanisha Hudson. I sincerely mean that. Tanisha Hudson, Jerry, this isn't about experience and capabilities. This is about having a yes guy. Look at the past city managers other than Richardson, all guys that wouldn't push back. It's no secret that Maurice Jones was not even qualified. Let's please stop acting like this guy is so much more qualified than Richardson. Can we compare who's done what in their careers? Like stop with this white man bullshit, please and thank you. Tanisha Hudson, she adds more perspective. Jerry, what happens when Chip has ran into the ground from not being able to do the work? Fill the vacancies or council running him down because he doesn't approve a department budget? He has no assistant city managers, no full city attorney staff, no NDS in place. Turmoil, all, all in City Hall since Mo Jones left and council stepping way outside its boundaries. So if all that continues, how will Chip be successful? You had people here and didn't allow them to be successful. Own that. Susan Steinbart is watching from the Thomas Jefferson, um, Land Trust. Jerry and Tanisha, Chip Boils has so much direct experience in this job. I support this hire. Abby Tannenbaum-Guskin. Interesting, Jerry Miller. That was your comment when Tanisha Hudson was on your show. It's funny how people are jumping ship as it suits them. This was all done behind closed doors and Michael Payne, this is not what you said to us. You supported Dr. Richardson and then you, Cena Lloyd and Heather, and the mayor took the easy route and instead of doing the right thing, Charlottesville needed real change. And hiring Chip Boyle is not it. It looks like, it looks the same and feels the same. No change whatsoever. How can you be genuine and honest when you're not fighting for what you all stood for? All right, I want to, I guess I need to offer a couple perspectives on that, please. We didn't, council didn't have a lot of opportunity here. Listen to what happened. They hired a national search firm. The national search firm, their job was to hire a new, hire a new city manager. Make a shortlist, excuse me, make a shortlist of potential city manager candidates, allow council to vet them and then council would hire the new city manager. The national search firm said, there's too much dysfunction here. We can't do our job. The national search firm had beef with Chief Brackney in a Zoom call. And finally, the national search firm said, peace out, we need to cut ties. Pay us a couple thousand dollars for our hard work. You guys are on your own. Right after that happens or during the same time that happening, John Blair surprises council by saying, I'm going to Stanton for the city attorney job. I'm an attorney. I'm not a city manager. I'm piecing out. So five people, for lack of better phrase, had to scramble. And that's why you saw 20, 30 hours of closed-door emergency meetings where they're scrambling to find a shortlist of people. And with the amount of time they had to hire, the chip hire was about as darn good as you can get. Counsel was never going to welcome Richardson back again. The optics on that would have looked horrible. It would have made the five folks on the dais look wishy-washy if they had brought him back again. Chip was the best of the options, someone in the community that knows the players and has the institutional memory. More on this next week. We'll see if we can get Blair in the mix on the show. Um, see if we can get Chip on the program as well. We'll introduce you to, uh, the new CM on the show. We'll see if we can get a couple other counselors, maybe Lloyd on the program next week. He's right down the hall. Um, all right, I got to get out of here. My name is Jerry Miller. This is the I Love Seaville Show. It's a Friday, the 15th of January here in 2021. And what Michael and Cena and Nakia and Lloyd and Heather did yesterday was cross our fingers, pray and be very hopeful, the first step into finding a North Star and getting Charlottesville heading into the positive direction we know the community is craving, yearning and wants. Chip Boils, the North Star, the new city manager. My name is Jerry Miller. This is the I Love Seaville Show. You guys have a good weekend.